...of the cross-community climate collaborative effort here in Riverside, which is sort of an interdisciplinary ad hoc committee that the village is a part of and sponsoring pursuant to our participation in the cross-community climate collaborative, which is 15 West Cook County communities, including Riverside and North Riverside, that, and Brookfield as well, that have come together to achieve a very ambitious goal of eliminating greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 in a manner that is both promoting community resilience and has equity at the forefront. So, climate protection, equity, and resilience are the three guiding principles of the C4. Each community has been fortunate to receive the assistance of grant-funded consultants who are helping us to develop climate action and resilience plans that are tailored specifically to the culture and needs of our particular communities, because no two are alike. So, our process over the course of this last year has been to conduct a community engagement event in January called "The Road to 2050," where we invited members of the Riverside community to come together to envision what they wanted Riverside to look like in face of our changing climate in the year 2050 across a number of different lenses: place, prosperity, health and wellbeing, connectivity, living infrastructure, and of course, resource regeneration, which is like, you know, the energy component, how are we doing all of this? So, they came together with their ideas about what they'd like it to be like, and then how they thought we could achieve it, and we had a lot of free response data to work with there. So, with the assistance of our consultants, we developed a survey series where we basically took the ideas that had the greatest feasibility and potential impact and then surveyed a broader segment of the community as far as their thoughts on that, and are these ideas really ideas that would work, you know, or would you be in favor of them, are you not in favor of them, et cetera? Got that feedback, and then did the almost harder piece of conducting what is called a gap analysis, and that is where we had to look at data about Riverside and its specific assets and vulnerabilities, and measure that against the community ideas and say, "Are these ideas addressing everything that we need?" And if not, you know, or if it's not sufficient, we had to look to other plans, because there are other climate action and resilience plans out there. So, we supplemented, to the extent necessary, the community ideas with these additional ideas to fill those gaps, and there have arrived at a list of preliminary recommendations for your consideration. We are, we are at this point right now where we are engaging all key community stakeholders who could be potential implementers of parts of this plan, because there's no way that, you know, the Village of Riverside, or one entity, or one village, or anybody can do any of this alone. It is a collaborative effort, and so communication is key, and this is where, you know, we would like to know what you think. So, you know, we have a, have a process or a timetable in mind where we'd love to have feedback from your board, from the district, by mid-December so that we can further refine our recommendations before presenting them to the general public at large for additional consideration. We really want this to be a plan that everybody is a part of shaping. So, you know, I would love for each of you to kind of take a look at these initiatives, take a look at the, you know, the detailed summary that has the kind of statement of need for why we think each of these things are needed, and then maybe come up with questions, concerns, thoughts, you know, think about how it is consistent with, or how it might work with your long-term planning processes, be they capital, be it, you know, operational, be it curriculum development, all of these pieces. And I was talking to Martha just earlier before the meeting and thinking that perhaps, you know, there is a process that she would suggest for the, you know, compilation of these questions and concerns, and maybe that we arrange a sit-down meeting to discuss this further so that we can, you know, kind of see where we are and see where we're going with all of this. But I'm happy right now to address any questions that any of you may have. I know it's kind of a lot, because I just brought it to you tonight, but I just wanted to introduce the, the process and explain a little bit about the context and, you know, give you a chance while I'm here to, you know, talk about anything that might be on your mind.
Yeah. I personally have not had a chance to review any of this, and generally the open comment is just a comment, not really a two-way dialogue, but if anybody does have any open questions, we don't have a ton tonight, so.
Not so much a question, but I was at the early winter meeting, and there were a lot of ideas, so the idea of the gap analysis and trying to refine the ideas into something that's attainable is, is a good idea, so just thank you for opening up the discussion.
And I know I had shared with Aberdeen also that I had received this in advance, and I hadn't shared it yet, because I had reached back out to the village to say, "I want to have more of an understanding of sort of what are the expectations of the school district and the Board of Education." So, I'll look into that, and, you know, I think as Aberdeen's suggesting, is if there are particular thoughts or ideas that you would want to share with me individually, feel free to do so.
Yeah. I've definitely been following it, I just don't have all the details in here, so I appreciate this, I'll definitely read through it, and if I heard you correctly, December 15th is the date?
That, yeah, that's our target deadline, because we'd really like to have the team be able to work with all of the feedback and then work on refining things before hopefully, you know, our target to share with the public for their additional feedback and input would be something at the end of January.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Who makes up the team?
So, we have different point people for each of the six priorities, and trustee Kristen Evans is leading up the place priority. Prosperity is Suzie Kael, who was the, she was a economic development commissioner, but she has a background in urban planning and design, and so, you know, she has a dual, you know, interest there. Let's see, place, prosperity. Health and wellbeing is Andy Garman, who is a professor of, I forget what, exactly what his specialty is, but he is at Rush University Medical, and he has a strong interest in climate issues as a function of public health, so that's one of his focus areas. Place, prosperity, health and wellbeing. Connectivity, our lead on that is Assistant Village Manager Ashley Monroe, because we felt that connectivity encompasses both things that relate to physical connectivity, like transportation hubs and pieces, but also, you know, internet and other forms of, you know, interactive communication, and the village plays a large role in the infrastructure pieces for all of that, so we thought she would be the ideal head for that. The head of our living infrastructure group is Lisa Lambros, who is the Chair of the Landscape Advisory Commission for the Village. And the head of our resource regeneration group, which focuses on energy and, you know, natural resources and things like that, is John Hoagland, who is a resident who works for the EPA Region Five in Chicago in policy development. So, we have an excellent team together. We are supported by the consultants of the Urban Efficiency Group, which is a Chicago-based organizational group. Seven Generations Ahead, which is a sort of environmental consulting group out of Oak Park. And then also, we've been very fortunate to align with Chicago Wilderness Alliance, who, I don't know how we lucked into this, but they have a wonderful data guy who is a landscape architect by trade, but who did the, and spearheaded the first iteration of Chicago Wilderness Alliance's Climate Action and Resilience Plan, and is working on the second iteration, and has consulted with groups like on the North Shore regarding, if you look up the Brushwood Report on Health, it's, it's just an extraordinarily data-driven analysis, and that's where eventually we hope to be with our materials, is like that level of investment in supportive data behind everything, but we need to know from our stakeholders and from the residents that yes, this is where we want to go, this is what we want to see. There are some beautiful, and I don't mean to go on and on, but there are really some beautiful ways to use data to illustrate just the ultimate need for some of these actions that are being, you know, proposed here, and, you know, I, I hope to be able to show all of that to you at the, when we get to that point, but anyway.
All right.
I'm geeking out on the data, and I have to stop.
Yeah, I, from what I understand, this is a, well, it's obviously a very large issue, and just from what I've read, it seems very comprehensive for the regional area here, so thank you for this packet, and we'll give it a review, and we'll probably just coordinate through Martha, just so you're not getting bombarded with stuff from us.
Okay, all right, very much appreciated. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and that is it, I think, okay. Is anyone on the paper? All right, so that moves us into any, are there any recommended changes on the very light agenda that we have tonight? Big note, okay, move it over to Martha for the superintendent's report.
All right, and our first item is, we have a sort of a unique way of doing student presenters from Central Elementary this week, as you all know, is parent-teacher conference week and also heading into Thanksgiving, and Mr. Early from Central found that there were a lot of families that had many other commitments for their children tonight, so Pete Gatz is here from Central, and he'll introduce Tim, and Tim's going to introduce his students who are here virtually.
Mr. Tim Early? Second-year teacher in District 96, but many years of experience before he arrived here. He has the unique experience actually of teaching in Hawaii for multiple years before he came here, and in that, within that opportunity, created many same experiences for his students on the islands. He has created some of those, duplicated some of those experiences for students at Central, and given opportunities with different things in his classroom, such as 3D printers and hydroponic gardens, and he's here a little bit tonight to talk about one of the experiences that he creates with his students.
So, my students are here virtually. We recorded a video of them sharing their experiences with the different projects we've done so far this year, 3D printing, so I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, Board of Education. Today, we, the fifth graders of Central Elementary School, are excited to share with you the exploration into the world of 3D printing. With us today are some of the projects that showcase our creativity and the potential of 3D printing in education. What is 3D printing? 3D printing allows you to take two-dimensional designs, model them on a computer, and turn them into objects you can hold. In our classroom, we have three 3D printers. The 3D printer takes a roll of filament and brings it into the hot end of the printer. The hot end melts the filament, and it goes through the nozzle. The printer moves in a way that follows your design. After the filament is extruded, it then cools the filament back into a hard state.
How is 3D printing? 3D prints sometimes fail when they don't stick to the bed. This wastes a lot of time and filament. Our teacher looks at the model and converts it into a format that the printer can use. Modeling can be difficult. Some students have trouble getting their model from 2D to 3D.
As a class, our first project was to model a desk organizer for the things we used all the time in our class. We first started with a sheet of paper and laid out the items we wanted for our organizers. We measured them and used Tinkerdad to model our designs. Some of the designs took a couple of tries to get the measurement adjusted right.
Volume uses three-dimensional shapes. Volume is easier to understand when shapes are right in front of you.
We 3D printed this shape to help us understand volume. To make it even easier, you break it up. We decomposed it into three parts to find the volume.
We started learning a Hawaiian game called Konanik. We learned about King Kameha Meha, who united the islands of Hawaii. They played this game with a giant board made out of stone and little pebbles.
The pebbles were black and white. Some of the games took days or weeks to finish. The game has to be played silently. Both the players and the audience have to be completely silent.
The game teaches you patience, respect, and concentration. We modeled it on Tinkerdad, piece by piece. It took about seven hours for each game board to print. In a six-by-six form, it takes three to five minutes to finish a game.
This is the papanu, it is the board that you play and put the pebbles on, and these are the EDGs separate from the board, and these are just some of the examples that we play with in class.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, these are the same printers that we had for our old nameplates, or was that, that was before his time, so I don't know.
Don is back to shaking his head no.
No, totally different. Is this what is going to make the new ones, or is that, am I thinking, this is a totally different thing?
I don't know anything about that, sorry.
And Don, do you know? You're standing back there with a nod or a...
Are the, is the, is it the 3D printers, printers that are doing the new nameplates?
These are the new nameplates.
Oh, these are, oh, we're not doing the plastic anymore?
Right.
All right, okay, never mind, all right, completely irrelevant, I'm sorry.
Use for previous nameplates.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
How long does it take for the kids to create a design or a model that you then, and then how long does it take for you to process that to something that the machine can?
That's a good question. Depending on what we are modeling, some things can be, you know, it takes some kids 20 minutes, it takes some kids an hour, depending on how many iterations they have to go through, so that's one of the big things we talk about, is making sure when we measure things that we do with fidelity, that we're taking our time and doing it once instead of having to reprint, reprint, and reprint. It takes me about 20, I'd say 10 to, 10 to 15 minutes to look at each print, send it to my computer, slice it, send it to the printer, and get everything cleaned and ready to print. And depending on the model that we're making, some of them can take, you know, 30 minutes to print. We've been churning leaves and scanning them and learning how to make them out of filament so they last longer, and those take like 30 minutes to print. Some of the desk organizers just took like eight hours, 10 hours to print, so it can be something that runs overnight.
Was this your own technology that you brought in?
Um, yeah, I got my first 3D printer when I was in Hawaii, so that's how I first started designing it, and then, you know, I got addicted, and now I just have too many to, that I can take care of.
But these are your personal machines?
Yeah, 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 that I've had for a while, yeah.
That's terrific, thank you.
And I don't, maybe I didn't, I don't know, sure if I heard this from Pete or not, is this a regular course, or is this part of like extracurriculars?
Um, I just do this within my classroom. Like, I notice like a lot of times, like, students, like, one of the reasons why I chose the modeling for the desk organizer first was measuring is a big skill that my students I saw a need for, and what better way to do this in a way that is exciting for them than to measure for 3D printing? So, I always try, and every time I use a 3D printer, as we have a goal in mind that we're trying to look in, and I'm always trying to sneak in a little bit of, okay, here's how to use a ruler, or how, how can we lay things out, so.
Yeah, and I thought the kids that had the volume, that did the volume thing, it was a perfect connection.
Yeah, we, we were talking about volume in our classroom and thinking about, when we were learning about it, because we were a couple of days ahead of the other class, you know, how could we use our 3D printers to help the other class who are a couple of days behind us? Oh, we can model these real quick, print them overnight, and then we shared with the other class, so.
Oh, nice. And did they find, I assume they found that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, the teacher said it really helped, especially with like decomposing, like, seeing that pieces are taking, taken apart really helped the others, so.
Yeah, that's, I have a lot of discussion around, just in general, with like, everything is so digital and computer-based anymore, and it's like, the things that you can touch and feel and see, yeah, exactly, so, it's awesome.
Any questions?
Well, so, it sounds like there's, you know, some things go overnight, so I'm just wondering, you know, what are the space limitations in addition to the, the time limitations?
Um, I mean, I have them all throughout my classroom. I, I'm fine with the space, you know, I've kind of maxed out, like, my ability to process everything as they come in, so the nice thing about it is, you know, not all the designs come in at once, so I get a couple in at a time, so I can start those printing, and the nice thing is, you don't have to be there in person, so you can send, you know, three to the printer, and as long as the space works on the printer bed, it'll print, and you just come back the next day, and they're, they're done, so.
Very cool, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, and then next, to clarify in front of you, you have new nameplates, and these are a gift from students of District 96. The art teachers, the elementary art teachers devised this plan, so different than the Carvy printer that had made the other ones, this is actually student artwork, student paintings, and they used different, different scrap pieces, and then they made prints and put your names over it, so we can also edit, change, modify, so it represents student art, it is actual student art. And then you also have some other cards and information pieces, thank you pieces, this is actually all from the students here at Hauser, so our lovely backdrop is also an appreciation for all of you. It is Board Member Appreciation Day today, and Wesley, you have a stack of cards that came from different students and student groups, and I think some, everybody has this, and everybody has this larger card with like the watercolor on it, but then there's another stack of cards that are one set for the entire board, so you can pass those around during the meeting to share with everyone, but this is a, please hear our appreciation and thank you from our students and from our staff, and, and certainly from me and from our district leadership team, we just appreciate. The time that you all put in as board members, so one evening of appreciation is not enough, but here's your evening of appreciation, so thank you.
Lots of stickers, they all drew their own portraits off here. These are pretty cool, all right, I'll comb through these.
And then I just had one other brief item on the superintendent's report, and that is the strategic plan infographic. I believe we had shared that a while back, it was a special thanks to Kizmir Gorman, who had developed this, a new infographic in addition to sort of what everyone was used to seeing with all the goals and strategies on it, and then at, just this past Living the Plan session, we agreed to make all our links live, so now on our website, we have an updated infographic with clickable links that show, share more detail even underneath each of the goal areas. So, I don't know if it clicks through on Board Book, but you can find it on our website if you go under Strategic Plan. And that is all I have tonight.
All right. And these are all pretty cool, these must have been made in art class, I'm guessing.
Looks like it. Anybody, I don't know. From that way?
All right, okay, so where are we at? All right, Consent Agenda. Could the Board Secretary please read tonight's Consent Agenda?
Sure. Yeah, tonight's Consent Agenda consists of minutes of the following meetings. He, October 4th, committed the whole meeting, October 18th, regular business meeting, the personnel report as presented, and the payables pre-list as of November 15th, along with the payables pre-list as of October 31st.
Thank you. Is there, are there any items that a board member would like to pull off for further discussion before we vote? Nope, okay, Kathy, can you please call the roll? I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Okay.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Clas?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
And Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Okay, question passes.
Thank you. Uh, next section is Board Member Comments. Any comments from anybody tonight?
Appreciate the appreciation.
Yeah, that's a lot. I was not able to go, but I hear that the Veteran Day assemblies were very well-attended last week, so, those always are, so it's always good to see. I heard at Ames, it got a bit emotional, I don't, apparently there were some very, I don't know, stories, very good stories that were shared by some of the veterans or something like that, I wasn't able to attend this year, but, yeah, apparently it was pretty good from what I've heard around town, so.
I have a veteran that sang at life, and I missed that, I was there for part of it, and then, I didn't see you, Dan, I was way in the back.
Yeah, I was going to mention, you mentioned in the email you were there, I didn't see you either, it was, it was a lot of folks there.
Like a lot of our district events, very popular, and we're going to need to keep thinking about how to...
Yeah, accommodate for it.
Split, split groupings or something, so we're, we're on that too, it's a, it's a good problem to have, but it's something we need to take a closer look at.
Yeah.
This selection was "When You're Smiling" by kind of Frank Sinatra-ish.
Okay.
Proud Navy veteran from Chicago.
It's an incredibly well-done event.
And a lot of veteran, well, at least the ones I've been to at Ames, a lot of veterans show up too, like, from all different times or, I don't know, time periods, I guess, whatever you want, whatever the right terminology is for that. All right, that'll move us into old business, so first topic is a continuation discussion on school fees, so I'll pass it over to Dave to further that. We did, I don't know if you had a chance to watch the meeting, but we had some conversation, but I'll let you kick it off with some comments you wanted to make.
Sure, so, I guess, there's like two, two parts to this discussion, I guess the bigger, first of all, part is, do we want to continue, because I know there's been discussion in the past philosophically, do we keep student fees? If we do keep student fees, then there's this structure of like how we, there's a number of iterations that we've presented here that we can go through. I don't know, I guess, I know I sent everyone sort of one-way communications, unfortunately I was not here last week, but I am in support of maintaining school fees, but not in the current structure that we have, and so I did listen to some of your, some of the comments, I actually listened to all the comments from last week, and if you go to the end of the page, I believe it was you, Selena, that brought up a good comment, it's like, the percentages, when we broke it down, was not equalized, so what we, what we asked, what I asked Jim to do is, we took a look at the, the student fees and sort of equalized the assessment, like, not the assessments, because it's in property taxes, but equalized the share across essentially all the schools, so... So we were looking at the sixty-five percent of the total student fees based on today's numbers, and so, based on the budget. I also know, in my one-way communication, I also think that we should stop the parent provided supplies. There's multiple reasons for that. I mean, first of all, I've heard just sort of like you have Wes, and so I know some others, it's a big pain, people don't necessarily like to do that. Also, the other reason is that I do think it does, having parents go out and buy stuff, not everyone can afford those supplies, and so it does become sort of evident in some of the classes. I do know even when my daughters were at Hollywood, you knew the kids that couldn't supply, bring the stuff, or you saw kids who didn't bring in the brand-name stuff.
Yeah.
And so I just think it sort of perpetuates the, I guess, the inequality that people have, you don't want to necessarily advertise that. So I propose that we just eliminate it, and we did put a placeholder in there, sort of like the parent supplies of about seventy-five dollars, so our cost would increase, but I don't think we should increase to what we're proposing to charge. So we would absorb that cost as a district. So with that, I'm just going to sort of, I guess the first question is, do we have student fees? And I guess, and I'm going to say if the board decides to get rid of student fees, I still think we should get rid of the parent-provided supplies, I think this district should provide those.
Okay. I think that's the appropriate first question, because if we're going to get rid of them, then the second part is completely moot, so.
Exactly.
I think you shared your opinion, I was like, why don't we just go around this way? Selena, I know this is relative, well, maybe that's unfair to start with you, maybe we'll start with Stephanie.
Sure, yeah. I, you know, participated in two votes on student fees and both times I voted against, not because I am opposed to the idea of a student fee, because I did not agree with the structure, it felt very arbitrary, I couldn't really understand what the fees were intended for, just kind of the CPI, the increase, so I don't, I understand the need for them and, you know, I have thoughts on kind of the structure that you proposed with sort of the flat fee for an elementary and junior high, but overall, I'm still in support of fees, I just want fees that are transparent, that makes sense, and I also am open to the conversation about the supplies and have some questions in terms of what teachers might think about some of that. But to answer the first question, I am fine with keeping under a new structure, and I'm interested in this new structure that you've proposed, Dave.
Eric, Dave, Joel?
I think I've been fairly consistent in being in favor of the fees, just because there should be a certain share that parents help contribute to the education of their children. I'm not, to Dave's point of eliminating all school supplies, yes, in principle, but I also don't, I know that there's been, and this may be what you're working towards, is sometimes we seem to be, in the past, parents were asked to provide an awful lot of stuff, and so it seems like, I'd like to, if we're going to go that route, then the ask for what the classroom needs from the teachers needs to be rather refined and thought through so that we're not just ordering a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
And that's probably one of my bigger concerns, and maybe this is an opportunity to make sure that we really are appropriate, knowing that more will come on through, and so that would kind of, sorry Jim, this falls to you to kind of pay attention to what's being asked for cost-wise. It becomes a community, it becomes a school-wide effort to really pay attention to what we're buying.
Yeah.
And this kind of fits into the whole C4 presentation that we don't get more than we need.
Yeah.
But I think refining the fees towards elementary and junior high is good as well. I, unlike a number of other people, including Stephanie, didn't feel like it was that arbitrary, but it has become, many people feel it is arbitrary, so maybe this helps to alleviate that argument.
All right. Do you want to go or do you want me to come back to you?
Yeah, sure, I missed the meeting a couple weeks ago, I was sick, but I can catch up enough, I understand the concept, we do the same thing. In the College Pharmacy at UIC, we have student fees that have to account for something, so I appreciate that the student fees are consumable things or contribute to like the upkeep of things, like library books and things like that, and I think that makes a lot of sense. I also will side on, okay, I like buying school supplies, like I actually, that's fun, but it's not like my kids want, like can even get Lisa Frank or Trapper Keepers or anything like that, so when it's very like prescriptive, like we might as well just keep everybody like, here's your Target Purple folder and your, you know. That would, I think that would take a lot of pressure off parents. I have a question though. Families that have multiple kids, and I think new fees or old fees, it doesn't really matter, what's in place for families who can't afford fees necessarily? Like let's say they have like three, four kids, or even two kids, and they just can't afford the fees at the time, is there like a payment plan, is there assistance from...
So families that are eligible for free and reduced lunch are also eligible then for that same free or reduced school fee?
Okay, okay.
And then, Jim, I don't know, like when there's a multiplier, like multiple families, even multiple children in the same family?
Maybe we just follow the free and reduced.
Okay.
I think what you're saying is like there are families where they're not eligible for free and reduced, but by the time you buy your school supplies and pay your fees for three or four children, you know, it's...
It can be kind of a big drop.
I think families on, maybe a case-by-case have reached out about paying over time or something, and I think the district has been open to that.
Okay, okay, I was just curious.
And I think just more broadly, I remember, I think it was earlier this year, we had that, I believe that policy came up and we had a pretty in-depth conversation, I think any fee, the free-reduced theory applies, like if you can't afford it, you get any fee across the board.
Field trips, it's athletics, it's not just school lunch.
Right, okay.
Anything else?
No.
Well, let's see, so I'm glad that I'm not the only board member here who actually likes shopping for school supplies.
I do, I don't want like office supplies, like I don't know what it is.
It's fun, it's fun trying to find the best prices on this, the best prices on pencils here, the best prices on folders.
My fifteenth target.
Yes, and there is a word for parents who buy the non-brand name items for the school supplies, and I think that's called smart.
Yeah, because they're going to come home unused.
Or broken.
Sometimes, I'm still, I still lament a three-sixty protractor that I procured once upon a time, it took, I think I had to go to Blick downtown to get it, it was expensive, and it's never been used, so still today.
It's like a challenge.
But it is sort of fun, but that said, I definitely do appreciate the transparency that's added here, kind of getting, giving parents a better idea about where these fees are going for, you know, what they're going for, what they're being charged for. I am somewhat concerned in that, as Joel had mentioned, that, I mean, my past experience, you know, with different classes, it always seems to vary. Some classes you'll have a lot of stuff to get, other classes barely anything. I do worry about, you know, if we're just setting like a certain budget amount for each classroom, that, you know, human nature of these things, or people are going to want to try to maximize their budget every year. So I want to make sure that what we're actually getting fits a real need in that, that we're not just getting a whole bunch of stuff that will not get used every year, and that eventually increases costs to the district.
Yeah, I'm sorry, do you have questions or, I don't know this answer, but I know like at Hollywood, they, teachers give a list, and then, don't, they give a list of the stuff they want, and then that list then passed on to the parents, correct?
Yeah, but I will say that every now and then, a question will come up, parents will say, how come our list isn't the same as...
Yeah, right.
So like, in an ideal world, all fifth-grade teachers would agree on a fifth-grade list, but there is variability to it, and it's something we've looked to sort of tighten up and clean up over time, but it's not, it's not by any means perfect on that end.
So as we get through, as we get to that part, because now we got four, so we're keeping fees, I will just say I'm in favor of fees, I could be swayed to go in the other direction. I've talked to some people that were, well, former board members that were not in favor of fees and had a lot of dialogue around that, so I could be persuaded, but I think for the main reason that Joel stated of just, you know, there's that idea of like parents contributing a little bit more than non-parents, and I think this is one way to do it without getting into too much minutia, and I have a lot of questions on the parents' fee thing, so I'm just going to pause there and I'll pass it over to Selena.
What were the arguments that previous board members had in favor of not continuing to have fees paid by the parents?
There was a sense of unfairness, sorry, a sense of unfairness, as Stephanie noted, there was, some people had thought that the lists were somewhat arbitrary. What we know from the past is that those initial base-year numbers were supposedly developed from kind of, here's what was being used at the time, so, you know, maybe that was based off a more paper-based environment. Those were two, I think it was mostly potential arbitrariness of the fee structure, because it was so variable across K through eight, and then a sense of why should people have to contribute, and I really can't think of another one off the top of my head.
Kind of the general, just the general buckets where it's public schools, it's tax money, it should just all be kind of included in your community from an equity perspective. I think that was kind of the general theme without getting too deep into it.
That's where I was going with unfairness part.
It should be mentioned though, that the fees that we're charging, even if we're restructuring them, and any amount that's going upward is basically a pittance compared to what gets charged at RB. It's definitely, they get ratcheted up quite a bit there.
Yeah. We've done a comparative elementary school fee analysis.
Start saving now.
We've done some periodically, this has been a question, I appreciate the board, you know, sort of taking a look and trying to come up with a plan that, that had become sort of systematic, to approve school fees annually, if that's the way, if it's about fees, because I think there's been a lot of discussion about fees philosophically, pragmatically, appreciate all of it, but I know, I think, that's what I'm hearing right from all of you, you want to bring some direction and closure to it.
Sorry, there's one other element, and that was previous to say, four years ago or so, it was just supposed to be, there's a base year and then it ratchets up, so then, because the board was, it was kind of a consent agenda item, but then it got pulled off the consent agenda and became a much more discussed element, but there was initially an attempt to just say, here's what the fees are and we will escalate them at appropriate CPI rates from here on, but then the discussion got reopened.
Yeah. I've been, yeah, we've had far too much discussion on school fees.
Honestly, there's some frustration on my end, but we're still discussing it.
And I think this, just for me, my personal position on this, I think this is more, this makes a lot more sense to me, so hopefully we can just, the idea here is come to a consensus on our philosophy and the strategy, and then turn it into more of a consent agenda-type thing, and maybe revisit every four years or something like that, just to make sure as new, as new members kind of come in and out, that we want to keep going with it, but trying to just make this less of a, I mean, man, we spend an hour or two, it feels like, every single year talking about fees, and we never make any progress. Now I feel like we're starting to make some, this is good progress, now we just got to figure out, like, is this what we're aligned with and just kind of like try to put it to bed, at least that's what I would personally like to do.
Yeah, and I guess, I'll tell us, sixty-five percent I came up with is basically keeping the revenue, what we would have had under the, I'm completely open to reducing this, making it fifty-fifty, making it sixty-forty, I mean, we don't have to keep this, but I just basically wanted to sort of say, let's make the percentage equal. Sixty-five percent gives us the same essentially revenue that we have, that we would be getting under the old fee structure, so that's just, I'm just hoping that we can, we don't have to keep it at that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I'm in favor of continuing to have fees. I don't know that I have any other reasoning apart from what's already been provided by everyone else. I do like the idea, and thank you for putting together the numbers that have sort of more of a equal sharing of costs between the elementary and the junior high students, so. And then I guess I'll have more to add on the collective purchasing of fees, but I think the first step is we're keeping fees.
I guess my question, how long will they stay? You know, right now it's a potential per-yearly increase based on CPI, but you're saying maybe not revisit it for a handful of years, so are we saying whatever fees we decide on would stay in place so families would know for X number of years, this would be your fee as, you know?
Yeah, so to expand on that, yeah, so what we did here, if I remember correctly, Dave, is it's the material and supplies line, well, it's the line items that you have added up here under like actual consumable student materials, which was always kind of a question of like what exactly are these fees paying for? So now, you know, if anybody in the community were to ask, we can say, here's what these fees go for, and then my personal thought, and this is up for debate, is as Jim does the budget every year, whatever this line item goes up, we're literally just taking this number and dividing it by students, we would, you know, if it goes up one percent or one and a half percent, then the fees would follow suit. We could also lock them in for a couple of years, I think your whole thing was like, you only, yeah, but we only increased it when it hit a five-dollar mark or something like that, so we could go through a theory like that, hopefully, you know, this hyperinflation is starting to come down, hopefully it doesn't happen again, but as long as we're not in one of those times, it should be a fairly modest change, so we could probably lock it in. I appreciate your comment, Dave, about like it is going to cost us a little bit more money to do it this way potentially, and if we lock it in, it definitely will, because we're not getting those inflationary factors, but all that's open for debate. I think since I'm, since I kind of have the floor at the moment, that's what I was thinking is just lock in these fees at whatever we decide, just, I think, I guess, formulaically, that line item divided by the number of students would be the fee, and then you just brought up what is that student share of it, which we can open, and then do we want to lock it in, or do we want it to adjust it by CPI? So I guess maybe...
And then I also, if I can, I'd also throw in like, because if we, if we do pay the, if we do eliminate the parent's supplies, our costs will go up pretty, I mean, approximately, we're estimating, we don't know, estimating about seventy-five dollars a student, so I guess my question is, so when we start talking about that formulaic, like the amount, I'd like to take into consideration, let's just assume it's going to go up, so I don't really want to, like, because right now, we're estimating it's about two hundred twenty, for like, it's two hundred twenty dollars per student, now if it's going to be, if we're going to put the parent supplies, it's going to be two hundred ninety-five dollars per student, so that fee would then be essentially about a hundred and like forty-seven dollars and, like, I mean, two hundred forty-seven, a hundred forty-seven dollars and like fifty cents, so. So I'm just saying, we should, let's just take that into consideration, that our costs will probably go up next year if we get rid of that. So I guess my question is, I think we should have that discussion, whether or not we're going to keep the parent supplies or get rid of them?
Yeah.
And if we get rid of them, then we talk about like what percentage?
We want to talk about parent supplies first?
Yes.
So that it's part of the whole, okay, I was going to go in the other order, but if you, okay.
Do you understand, just because...
Yeah, yeah, no, I like how you broke it down here, and I was going to just try to take it one lane at a time, so it doesn't, because I think it's going to get too...
I could have moved the columns around.
Yeah, so I'm good with that, I think the parent supplies is probably going to be the bigger conversation, so, do you want to, you want to start that?
Sure, so like I said, from a personal perspective, I found it, I know I, I found it difficult to just go get the supplies, I always sort of did that, or that box that they send. I guess also the thing is though too, is a lot of parents I've talked to do not like this, I know there's some people on the board that like going supplies, God bless you.
I think we might have options, I got to ask.
But a lot, pretty much everyone I've talked to does not like, does not like going to supplies, but I guess the bigger thing for me is sort of the equity, like equity issue, is that some of the things that are like in the supplies, if I recall correctly, like Kleenexes and like wipes and like number-two pencils and what have you, but if some kids can't afford it, the families aren't going to buy it, or some kids will go buy the generic version. I mean, kids can be, I mean, kids are kids, they're going to point this out, it's like, oh, somebody got like the store-bought brand or something like that, and I just say, we get rid of this, everyone gets the same, same Kleenex, same wipes, same pencils, everything's the same, it sort of eliminates that disparity, the economic disparity that we have in our district. I mean, because, because I guess also I'd like to point out too, Martha, as you pointed out, about twenty percent of our students are on free and reduced lunch, so there is a significant portion of our student body that would fall into that, could fall into that category.
I was just going to make one, just point of information, I think it was Selena last meeting, you asked about the PTAs and PTOs, many of them sell like a school supply kit. And I did reach out to the PTA and PTO presidents and heard back from four of them and they each described it as a small fundraiser, that it's mostly done as a convenience item for families, but PTAs and PTOs do make a little bit of money on selling those school supply kits to keep for the PTA, PTO for other activities and things they do.
Do you have any sense for how many parents engage with that? Because if you had a lot of parents that were using that for the convenience factor, it sort of speaks to the idea that maybe parents don't like to do their own shopping, right?
I'm sure I could get the number, we actually have PLT on Friday, have it on the agenda. But because I knew this meeting was coming up, I, I reached out to them by email and, you know, most all responded, which was great. And they all said, you know, it was a small fundraiser, I think a good following question is how many?
Yeah, compared to how many parents, yeah.
For, for seventy-five dollars, I mean, is that kind of basically what those kits are priced or?
They were, the ones last year, they vary by grade because they're different.
Right.
And they vary by company, the company these last two years actually had like brand name stuff. The company there before had really odd things that were like, that were kind of garbagey. I mean, they got to last for the year, right? I'm trying to see if I can find what we got at Hollywood last year for that.
I guess just the, the idea of seventy-five per student seems a bit high to me. I could be wrong though.
That, that was one question I had. Damn, it's seventy, I feel like I don't spend seventy-five, is it? Okay, I wouldn't be surprised if I do, but I, I just, I have to buy it, so I, I buy the box and I take it to school and I unload it.
There's still going to have parents perhaps who want to, you know, personalize buy items for their child that they're excited about. And so now they're made to pay this and in addition, they're going to be paying more. And so I, I really appreciate your, your lens here on the, the equity piece and actually a follow-up question on that more than to Martha. I think I'm more open to not get rid of, or not like roll in the parent supply cost into the fees and really look to streamline the supply lists across the district that we are asking parents to purchase. Now, the question is for free and reduced lunch, I understand that we cover then the fees applies. Do we offer any type of, I know there's different community programs, et cetera, for back to school supplies. Does the district offer anything to free and reduced families for supplies?
So a student who's McKinney Vento, who's identified as without permanent housing, they do get their school supplies covered. And looking at Nora, Nora's our McKinney Vento liaison. And I know Nora has not expressed frustration, but this idea that like if there was one, one supply package that she could then be providing to those families. So that uniformity would help us in, in multiple ways and I think that's, that's part of what you're pointing to. We don't have a, like a giveaway, I know West Forty, our regional office does, so we'll post that on our website or share that information. Those things tend to obviously come up in the middle of the summer because that's when families are getting their school supplies. So I don't, I don't have a sense of how many District Ninety-Six families might take advantage of a, of a program like that. But if they are, they, the ones that I've heard about have been regional and not just specific to District Ninety-Six, like a school supply giveaway.
Yeah, I might, I don't know, like was I feel like I could go either way on the, on the family, on the fee, on the, oh, sorry, the supplies?
So my question on that is, does this have to be mandatory? Or does that screw up the budget if we make this an optional thing? Is that, does that make it harder for us to plan, does that? So again, pushcoin, you've got to check all the boxes for whatever grade you're in, like could we have a, I will buy, I want the supplies or don't check it if you don't want, and then you have to go buy your own?
Well, I guess the thing is. I've always been told, at least I recall, and Martha, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was told like the school supplies are not mandatory, you can get them, you don't have to get them. At least that's what I remember being told by my wife, because she was more on top of it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we wouldn't hold you to, if, if a child didn't bring their supplies.
I think it's what you've all said, like, but how does a child feel when they don't bring their supplies? Yeah. Yeah.
To contribute to the answer to Selena's question, at Hollywood, last year thirty-five families? Well, no, we sold thirty-five kits, so I don't know how many families that is, but we have about a hundred and twenty kids in the school and the PTA made a hundred and two dollars from that. But we don't have to do anything, like all we do is just send it out and people do it, so it's, yeah.
So you, thirty-five families.
Thirty-five kids.
Kids.
Kids got sold, yeah, and then we made a hundred and two dollars off of it.
Okay.
Thirty-five kids out of a hundred and ten kids in the school.
Yeah.
Thirty-five out of a hundred and ten, okay.
I guess my, my follow-up question is to Dave, is like how many kids actually brought supplies then?
I don't know.
Yeah, no, right. How, how many kids then actually brought supplies? So did that seventy percent or?
Meaning like so between, not necessarily between thirty-five and a hundred and ten is who bought their own, but there might be a certain amount of kids who just didn't bring supplies.
That's possible.
Because I remember the first year I did this, it was like, I won't do this again, the first year I did it was because I couldn't find everything and it's like, all right, I'm just going to buy whatever, I just didn't buy it. It's like, because of course I waited till the last minute because I'm, so, so I guess that's, that's, that would be a question too.
Now, I don't think any of the supplies are included in our budget currently, right? Because we ask parents to. Yeah, because we, we are assuming the parents are going to buy it and then whatever we run out of, the district supplies it, because like parents aren't getting like a resupply list. So, so that would be, so that line item or those multiple line items in our budget would go up to account for the additional supplies. Because I mean, I think, I mean, we got Kleenexes and paper towels and, and thinking like some of that stuff is pretty basic things, markers, stuff like that that we buy anyway. So that was kind of my idea of, or my thought process of like just including the parent supplies, because I think it feels like it's just a tack on to stuff that the school already has anyway. But I think like process, how, like how do you do it, do you create options? I, I don't know that I want to, I don't know that I, I don't know like, I don't know if I like it being mandatory, just like eliminating the choice entirely, but I like it being an option, but I don't know if that screws things up.
Right, I guess my thing is, we're not saying people can't bring their own supplies.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean.
But if I'm going to bring my own supplies, I don't want to pay seventy-five dollars.
Well, you're actually only probably paying less than that because you're subsidizing part of it.
Right, and I guess the thing is, but I guess if somebody wants like the latest, the most recent movie folder or something, you know, let them go get it, that's fine. Or if they want like a specialized pencil, like that's fine, go get it. It, it's just, I guess, we're not telling people they can't, but I always felt sort of restricted because we get those very prescriptive supplies saying, we need this type of marker, this type of pencil, this type of folder, this color folder. It's like, okay, so it's like we're already, I mean, basically saying what you can't.
I understand, like the detail of the supply list or certain things.
Some, some things seem to get put on a list once and stay that way year to year. I mean, I know that what was it, this past year, it was the pink markers, or excuse me, the pink erasers were the bane of my existence. It's everywhere, every store I went to had white. And do I get white ones, is that okay?
I guess just a few thoughts that I have on it is that I appreciate like the originality that students can have in picking out their own supplies. And I do think that like, you know, it allows them to express themselves creatively and I'm all for creative expression and sometimes I think students do use elements of their supplies to express that. But I just think in terms of like thinking about community gain and community helpfulness, right? Like there's some major time efficiency we're saving the community by not having to go run around and, and buy school supplies. There's some major scale benefits to purchasing that we're gaining as a community by, you know, having the school do all of these purchases. And to the point about there being like extra supplies that we're purchasing that may not be getting great use, like our district is financially responsible. We are not wasting goods around here, right? And so like if the teachers are seeing excess and there is cost to be saved, Jim's on top of it, Martha's on top of it, they're not going to have a bunch of pink folders piling up in the classrooms, you know, because there's going to be questions asked about why are we continuing to order more pink folders or pink erasers or whatever it is. So I just think that like, as a whole, there's a lot to be gained here by just putting it through the schools, putting supplies through the schools.
I just want to clarify one thing, this does not show that the parent supplies are being subsidized, so it looks like it's.
Right, that's why.
Yeah, okay.
I just threw that out there because we haven't made a decision on that.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess the question, I mean, it sounds like there's consensus, I know there's some, but there's consensus generally that we eliminate the parent supplies. Is that fair?
I'm not opposed to it, but I'm not sure I heard consensus yet.
I didn't hear consensus.
Okay, well, I hear a lot of maybe, so let's, if we can maybe get a little bit more firm.
I'll be honest, I think I misread what you were saying and my assumption was is that the school supply list, that hundred and ten or two hundred, whatever it happens to be, would cover everything that was a classroom provided supply, which in my mind, and this is where I was wrong, took all of those wipes and Kleenexes and all the stuff that was being treated as a donate to the classroom pile, like I figured we're just covering that.
Right.
And so that limited number of, and you know, maybe we don't buy the circular protractor, but the five folders and one box of pencils and one box of markers and that little bit of stuff that sits in the kid's desk, that was still a parentally provided item. But in my mind, this is also a way to really slim down that list, like you really don't need that much stuff, especially considering how much we're on our computers now.
No, and I guess.
So that, that's what I thought we were doing and therefore I was kind of splitting the differences I'm apt to do. But, you know, one eraser, box of pencils, some folders were pretty good.
And I guess what I, what I'm proposing is that we just get rid of every, all, all that fees. If kids want to go buy their own special pencil, let them go do that, if they want to buy a special, great, go do that. But the school just provides everything that the student needs for that classroom.
Which means Jim, they would do it through their, like, so they order classroom supplies, not school supplies, but they order other things. There's a building-based budget.
These need to put together their order and give it to the school secretary and then they can just approve that for this whole, and I think, so if you had, if they now have a budget that would cause them to, I think, to locate a culture too, or maybe I should get more for the holders and have to take them forward. I, I think it, I guess I would prefer anything that goes from the kids' home and I, the principal's office and the business office.
It should be, any expense should go through more than one set of hands.
Yeah, and I have no idea how much money you would save, but I think your point on like bulk purchasing, if we buy ten thousand of something in one rather than ten thousand people buying one, it's going to be cheaper. So I'm sure there's some level of cost savings there. And I, and I like your point about just overall waste management, I'll call it, just like we already have enough of this, we don't need to ask parents for more, we don't need to buy more. So I, I like those two aspects of it. I'm, I'm struggling with the seventy-five dollars for whatever reason and maybe I'm not off base on that, but, or I'm off base on that, but.
Yeah, let's just put the seventy-five dollars in the placeholder.
Okay, all right.
It's not, it's based on my old recollection of what I spent at Hollywood. So it's, it's a, it's a placeholder basically saying that our costs are going to go up, are they going to go up seventy-five? Maybe it's twenty-five, maybe it's a hundred, I, I don't know, but I just wanted to show that it's going to go up by something.
Okay.
My recollection of it from being a late shopper is that it's significantly higher than seventy-five dollars.
Oh, yeah?
Okay.
Yes.
Going to stop shopping in Neiman Marcus.
I guess we haven't figured out, I don't know. Tacking it on also just the optics of like what the new number then becomes, you know? It's just a really high amount to wrap your head around, like you're thinking, yeah, fees and, I don't know, you're not, you're registering your kid in April, you're paying your fee, like you're not even like thinking school supplies and quite yet, so.
But then that's why you don't have to worry about school supplies, but that's why that's. Like I said, the sixty-five percent keeps the revenue the same. I'm open to reducing that, if we want to reduce that to twenty-five percent and just sort of put like a fraction of it, I'm fine with that too. If we want to go like ten percent, maybe I might be open to that, but we can adjust that percentage. So it's not, we're not keeping it at sixty-five, I'm just, sixty-five is basically saying that's what we have, that will keep our revenue the same. So we can reduce the revenue, we get like about two hundred eighteen thousand, something like that. So I mean, we could reduce it, maybe take a hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, it's like what this board wants to do. So that percentage is based on, like I said, our current revenue.
Let me do this, do we all like the flat fee structure change? Is there, is there consensus on that? I, I feel like we do have consensus on that, just leveling it out in some capacity. So I think the two thing. No, go ahead.
Leveling out between an elementary and junior high, so there'll be two structures, right?
Yeah, and it won't be different by grade, it'll just be elementary and junior high, yes, thank you for that clarification. So then, now we're kind of getting into the share of it with the parent supplies, so it sounds like what share of that do we want? So of the total amount divided by students, what percentage of that do we want to charge as a fee? And then do we or do we not want to include the parent supplies are kind of the two remaining questions, which we, I don't think we have to answer tonight because none of this goes into effect until, well, depending on how we do it, registration time, which goes. Jim has a different opinion? Okay, when, when do you need this decision by?
Well, especially the tuition for preschool, we have a discounter, so we can start every time to that.
Okay.
The tuition for preschool is not, it's not the fee. Right, yeah.
It gets approved, when we do school fees, we always approve the preschool tuition, which is actually part of why we had moved the approval process up on the board agenda. I think it's January, you parent, you're doing information nights and that and parents will ask that, we could do that as a separate item.
Do that as a separate item.
Yeah, yeah.
This is also why I want this to be the last time we talk about it. I'm sorry, me both, say that out loud. I was thinking the same thing, Martha, if we have to, if we really have to, we could pull the, that piece of it out. Because I don't want to rush anybody into a decision, because I do think the parent supplies piece is a complete, I mean, I don't think, it is, it's a completely new thing that we have never discussed before. The fees is just kind of an ongoing thing for years that I think we should probably level out. Do, do.
To be honest, I, right now, I think I'd like to just settle at the standardized fees and revenue neutral. And if we want to discuss the parent supplies, we can do that at great detail later.
Okay, that's, I was just going to ask a question, you just made it into a statement that's easier to, so the sixty-five percent, just so we're on the same page, the sixty-five option you have here is revenue neutral? If I heard you correctly, okay. So. This is not a formal vote, just kind of going around, I don't think we're voting on this tonight, right? We didn't, yeah, yeah. Does Joel's comment resonate with everybody? So that would be the, the second option, elementary schools at two twenty, two twenty would be the cost and sixty-five percent of that is what we charge for a hundred forty-three. And every grade at elementary, you pay one forty-three, junior high is two fifty-seven, two hundred fifty-seven dollars, sixty-five percent is a hundred sixty, sixty-seven dollars would be our junior high fee for all three grades. And then we'll table the parent supplies for maybe next meeting, a month should be plenty of time for us to talk about it and then come to a vote on it, unless we want to bring it up at Cow somehow. So.
That doesn't necessarily resonate with me, because I do think that if we add the parent supplies portion, that we might want to consider subsidizing it. In which case it might move around that sixty-five percent.
I, I agree with Selena, I, I see what you're saying, Joel, and I guess I'd much rather just pull the preschool, the preschool tuition off and vote on that separately. Because to Selena's point, if we do include the parent fees, it's going to adjust, it's going to change the formula.
Okay, I wouldn't personally mind an opportunity just to talk to some parents about this concept and see what they say. Because I'm not really, I'm, I'm not sure, I've heard some grumbling, but like it's not a major topic for people, so it's not a deep conversation I've ever gotten into, so.
Well, I'm, I'm guessing that this isn't one of those issues, that it, if it affects you, if it bothers you, it's going to really bother you.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't, you're not going to talk about it, you're not going to hear about it.
Exactly.
My sense is I think you'd be unique, I haven't done a in-depth analysis, you'd. be unique as a school district in picking up what is typically a parent purchase school supply package. We have PLT on Friday, Dave, it's coming. Are you comfortable if we also ask the PTAs and PTOs to, sometimes they take an item back and get some feedback?
Because I'm sure they've had a lot of dialogue when it comes to those kits, on, like, why they started doing that. Because I think they just started, well, Ames, I think they just started doing it like three years ago, maybe. Or maybe it's, maybe I just started participating three years ago, I don't know.
Chloe had them, and that was now five or six years ago.
It probably just comes and goes.
Okay.
Oh, maybe we have him.
It comes and goes.
We had that weird two-year period where they didn't do anything for a while, so...
Right, right.
I could be confusing myself, too. Okay, so, we'll start over. Not completely. Jim, you need a decision on tu, uh, preschool tuition by the next meeting. And the rest of this, when?
March.
March? Okay. So why don't we do that? I think we're, we are in agreement that we wanna level out the fees, and we need to continue to discuss what portion of that we charge as a fee, and the parent supplies. And so we can continue that.
And I guess I'm gonna ask you, is there any way we could possibly get, obviously, we've not done this before, but is there any way we could possibly get sort of an estimate on what, if we bought the supplies, what that would cost us?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. That would definitely be interesting here.
Yeah, we can just sort of, we can just get an estimate, like an estimate, so that we can, we can go into our calculation.
Third year.
Right, yeah. Or a lot more than seventy-five, as Selena said, so...
It doesn't have to be perfect at all, probably.
Right, yeah.
So you can take what the PTAs and PTOs charge reach grade levels kit, because they said it's not much of a fundraiser.
Yeah, and we, I can ask that, I can ask that question.
I think they also ship it to your house.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then I just open the box and take it to school.
Might as well just ship it directly to school.
Yeah, I put it in my storage locker, I mean, my storage, and it's like, sits there until August.
Okay. Everybody good with that? All right. I'm moving on, so, keep that brief. Okay, thank you, Dave. Uh, okay. New business item, we have a intergovernmental agreement with Riverside. And Martha, I'll just hand this off to you to talk through this.
Sure, and actually, Jim, Jim is the one who's been shepherding this. This is about striping the tennis courts at Blight Park. This has been something that we had talked about a while ago, and also got put on hold. So they wanted a formal intergovernmental agreement for this.
You just wanted to customize it a little more for what students like, could do.
Yeah, this was presented a long time ago with modifications. There's a page in here that shows it's got four-square and a, sorry, kickball court and hopscotch and such.
So I guess the question I had is, striping, is it gonna be strictly for tennis courts, or is it's?
No, so it'll have like four-square and a half basketball.
It's in the, it, Martha, it's in the tennis court area, because that's a paved location. I think that's all we're really doing, is just adding that new striping for the, the play stuff. I don't think we're striping the tennis courts like that, the court itself.
I think it is on the court.
It's on the court, but we're not paying for striping the, the lines for tennis.
Oh, you're showing up like that. Yeah, I, I looked at the site plan, I could not figure out exactly what I was supposed to be seeing, because it's the whole thing, and we're only talking about the tennis court. So it would just be striping the tennis court, and it looks like this one has a pickleball court in it, and then we'd put a four-square in that southwest corner. I think if I have my directions correct.
Yes. So we are only providing a four-square and hopscotch and kickball. And I think we're also purchasing a mobile basketball hoop, or we're putting it there. The existing pickleball, there is already a tennis court striping, so the lines to play tennis, and then lines to play pickleball. And by the way, these are plans are done, that just stays there. So we're only doing the new stuff.
Okay.
This is just a black and white view, so it's a little harder to read that.
Yeah, now that I'm like, I presume Dan, I can...
So, we're, we're putting in a couple thousand dollars worth of striping at most.
But it has nothing to do with the existing tennis court and pickleball court, it's just adding the other things around the periphery.
Adding the other stuff on the perimeter.
Kids already play on the tennis courts there. And so the suggestion had come up, it seemed like a fairly straightforward one, that there were just ways that the kids would enjoy playing there more by being able to...
Kids, giving more curated things.
Yes. No, thank, that's good. I was fine with it. I just wasn't a hundred percent sure exactly what I was supposed to be looking at, so this makes much more sense.
It's, it's, it's probably not of consequence, but there is an error on this, when I see this, where it says existing asphalt, the first time I saw that, my heart skipped a beat, because that's grass. But, I don't know, that, that has nothing to do with this plan, but...
Where's that?
Oh, yeah, in the amphitheater area.
Yeah.
I noticed that, too.
Oh, that, that doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, I just, I don't know.
They should do it right.
Yeah. I, 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 I had nightmares of, of waking up to asphalt where there's grass in it currently. Well, this was in the plan.
The village would have an issue with that, too, I think. Okay. So that's new business, we'll put that on for, I assume we're gonna put that on, maybe, okay. All right. So if any additional questions, doesn't sound like there's much, but any questions now? Okay. That one should probably be pretty straightforward. That is our agenda for today, very light. Kathy, do we, doesn't look like we have anybody else that showed up?
I do not.
All right. So we are going to be going into a closed session. We did pivot on our normal, closed before the meeting, since we had such a short agenda today, so that we didn't have to worry about folks getting here on time and the forty-five minute time box that we're in to open the, to go into open session. So we will be going into a closed session. Future meeting dates for our open sessions are December sixth, committee of the whole meeting, seven PM in the multipurpose room at Ames School. December twentieth, a regular business meeting at seven PM here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. January third is canceled, and January seventeenth will be a regular business meeting, seven PM here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center.
Just one thing to clarify, though, about closed session, we're not having any action after.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Dan. No decisions, no votes, no, nothing, nothing official business will be happening after we come out of closed session. It's purely just a, a closed session conversation. All right, and with that, meeting adjourned. Do I have to do that? Don't I have to close this session and then?
Yeah, we need to make the motion to enter.
But don't I have to close open before we go into closed, or no? Okay, is there a motion to go into closed session for, let's see, hold on, hold on, hold on, I gotta read. I gotta read a lot of stuff. For the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for purposes of, for approval by the body of minutes, or semi-annual review of the minutes is mandated by section two point zero six, five ILCS one twenty slash two C twenty-one, and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity.
Someone. Mr. Marhal?
Hi.
Mr. Versavi?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kayla?
Hi.
Ms. Claph?
Hi.
And Mr. Mayor Hunt?
Hi.
Okay.